Here.
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 Can we say the Pledge of Allegiance, please? Is there somebody here to meet us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the reason of its strength.
Thank you for coming in and meeting us if you want to give us your name and what year you are in school and a little bit about school council or whatever you want to tell us about.
All right, so I'm Ben Learned and I'm a senior.
I'm Baylor Clark and I'm a junior.
So I was going to talk a little bit about the past things we've been doing and then Baylor was going to give just like a future overview. So this last semester, the winter spirit week, we have been raising money for brain cancer research this whole school year to support Coach Brown and Mrs. Bowler. So that week we sold head cutouts at the basketball games, like the big cutouts of the faces, and then we had the Buffalo Wild Wings fundraiser night, and then we sold T-shirts, and then we had the dodgeball tournament. So that week we sold, or we raised a thousand dollars. And then thus far this school year, we have raised over five thousand dollars for brain cancer research as a student council, which is pretty awesome for one semester so far.
And then our upcoming plans, at the moment, we're organizing vice versa, which will take place March 16th, and then also we're looking to organize a fundraiser with the Amory Basketball to raise more money towards brain cancer research. So that's all we have, an idea.
Okay, thanks for coming in. Is there any visitors and correspondents that would like to approach the board? That being done, we're going to move on to reports, and we're going to go with 5.1. Mr. Nick Fasselli.
Hello, everyone. All right, here to go ahead and give the special report. The last time I gave it, I think, was January 9th, 2017, so it's been just a little over two years since we've done this. So the first thing is just going over personnel. I'm not going to go ahead and read through all the personnel here, but I'll go ahead and just do some highlights. We have 12, 12 teachers right now in the special ed department due to the extensive programming that has developed over the last two years, including the co-op program and the life skills program. We have Lindsay Boitnot, who's our special ed co-op coordinator. Erin Sealy, who was just recently hired this past year, is teaching some special education core classes along with resource. Her strength has definitely been helping the department with Google and technology. She's a Google certified educator, and she's also been helping us with impact. Nicole Dunker is one of the three life skills teachers. She focuses in the functional program, which is the students who are mainly working on the life skills academic portion. Krista Hybrider is one of our co-taught teachers. She's co-teaching biology, lab science, and biology. Karen Milano is in her last year. She's retiring this year, which will be one of two positions opening. She teaches all our core special education English classes. Myself, I'm the special ed department chair. I go ahead and do impact, and then I'm also the accommodations testing coordinator. Kelsey Solberger is the autism and developmental program teacher. She started three years ago, and those three programs work together, but she works mainly with that autism and developmental area of, she does a little bit more different programs, different curriculums focusing on that autism spectrum. Colleen Steffens in her 12th year at WCHS. She is, she's our, she mostly mainly works with math. She is co-teaching block algebra for the first time this year. She's been co-teaching health now for three years, and last year we started a math lab. Usually the math lab is a focus in the general education area, and what we were finding was students who were remediating math in the special education department were then going into the regular math lab, which was then causing a lot of stress on the general math lab teachers because those students were needing so much one-on-one attention. We created a math lab this past year, two years ago, so now we have a math lab for students who do not pass the general education math lab, which allows them to get in a math lab with about three to four students of special education. She also was awarded the $5,000 Frank B. Stowe Scholarship for Bradley University this past year. She's pursuing a degree in counseling. Melissa Warfield has been teaching for 18 years here. She is our, she co-teaches four sections of English and a section of block algebra. Jill Wood, who was recently Jill Howard, is in her 14th year at WCHS. She's one of our life skills teachers, and she has completely revamped our transition program for life skills, and we can, we'll get into that in a little bit. Mary Jo Wolf is our other teacher retiring this year. She's been at WCHS 21 years. She teaches a lot of our core classes, US history, world geography, and resource. We have two related service staff members, Stacy Beckman, who works for Township. She's been a social worker here for two years, and Erin Phillips, who does speech for three years. These are our instructional assistants. Our instructional assistants mainly work in three different areas. They either work in the life skills area, they work in the resource area, or they are a job coach. We have about five life, five life skills instructional assistants. The rest of the instructional, one part-time job coach, one full-time job coach, and then the rest are in resource. Those instructional assistants are in resource have multiple responsibilities. They either are in the resource room working with students, they are either in a core class due to a need for an instructional assistant, they're in a general education class, or they could be helping in some other capacity in the school that is needed. These are the classes and services offered, very similar to the classes that were offered three years ago. We started co-teaching the last time I presented. Those are the same classes that are being co-taught currently. What we did propose this year was adding a cooperative, a co-op three for students that maybe need to go into co-op their sophomore year. We also recently revamped the life skills curriculum, so if you look in the program guide, it shows all the life skills and autism and developmental disorder classes that are offered. Department accomplishments. First one is the co-op program. The main thing I would recommend is, or suggest is, I could go into such detail on the co-op program and the life skills program, and we don't have enough time here. So I think it would probably be beneficial to have, I would probably have the three life skills teachers come and talk sometimes and give their onboard report, because they have so much that they can offer to everyone on what they're doing and what they're pursuing. The co-op program, August 2017, there were 29 students enrolled, and then in May 2018, there were 27 students enrolled, which is a huge jump from about four years ago, five years ago. The biggest thing is the increase in paid employment and the increase in the volunteer work experiences that have developed from Mrs. Boitnot, Mr. Garcia, and Mr. Garsky and Ms. Steffens. If you go in the community, you can almost go into any business in the community and find a student with a disability working. That could be a student from life skills, that could be a student with a learning disability, such a wide range. There are students employed at Brick House, CAPS, here at the school, Kroger, Riverfront Theater, either in a employed or volunteer experience. It's been, it's been awesome. And with that in mind, the step program, which is a program that Ms. Boitnot could talk about in much more detail, is a program that is through Tasswell Mason, and it's basically the number of students that you have enrolled, and then you have to have an outcome. And in order to have an outcome, you have to have 240 work hours and 60 workdays. Last year, WCHS earned $22,271 in step income. That is, that needs to be used towards students that are in step. So for example, that money needs to go towards job coaches, or it needs to go towards materials or curriculum that are used in that department. So for example, the resource room can't necessarily use that stuff because we don't have all students who are in co-op. It's mainly the students that, who are in the co-op program or in the life skills program because those are step students. The autism and developmental disorder and life skills programs, they're using multiple different curriculums right now. The big thing I want to focus on is their Panther professional experiences down on the bottom. The three teachers there have developed a program that has become very recognized, well-recognized throughout Tasswell County. Three years ago, when this program went from one teacher to three teachers, we are the ones calling Morgan High School, we are the ones calling Peaking High School to find out, hey, what do you do? What are the setup of your three classrooms? How do they look? How many students you have? Where do they work? What's your apartment like? Now, this year, Menomor was calling us, and that's due to the effort and the work they've put in. The transition program, which is our 18-plus, getting students ready, getting students out of here when they're 22 years old, has created three different Panther professional experiences in which students can participate in. The first one is Panther Perk, which has been here for about three years now. Panther Perk is a program that is focused on selling coffee and soda to staff. So students send out a survey, and then on Friday mornings, they go ahead and they create those products, and then they collect payment from staff members, and then they deliver it, working on those social skills. Button's Building Futures is a greeting card business that they just created in the winter before Christmas, and they are creating greeting cards for staff members or for anyone to then distribute to their family. They're a dollar card, and there was a template, and then the students in the life skills program had to complete the template to finish, finish the greeting card. And the other one that they're working on currently that they're just starting is Panther pantry. It's pretty, it's kind of like prep freeze cook. Students are using the foods lab, they're creating meals, and then they're selling it to staff members to go ahead and take it home and put it in their freezer. That one just got started, so they're just working on that one. The other one is Impact. Impact has been here for five years now. This is another one that could probably talk quite a bit about. This is since 2015, 539 out of 648 classes that passed are 83 percent. Last semester, 98 out of 118 classes were passed or 83 percent. The stat to look at, though, is the six new students that were in Impact before 2017, 2018 second semester, they passed 60 percent of their classes. This first semester, they passed 91 percent of their classes. They passed 43 out of 47. And as we always tell students, and we tell everyone, yeah, Impact's a part of that, but it's really, it's really a student. The student's making a choice to do better. The student's making a choice to use their resources. Impact is just something that helps them get there. We've had, they've had, Impact has had 14 graduates since 2016, received over $5,000 annually in sponsorship money from local businesses and individuals for service projects. There's an Impact Continuing Education Scholarship. The other accomplishment is the department's always looking for curriculums and programs to use to increase academic achievement. The one that's been used the most recently has been power reading. Power reading's used in our core reading programs, our basic English, nine basic English, 10 mainly, and it's really focused on reading comprehension and reading fluency. Mrs. Milano did a lot of research on it. We looked at three programs about two years ago. When that program's used for an entire year and two stories are read a year, there's on average a 1.7 average game reading level in the tiger. Doesn't seem like a huge difference, but when a student's reading at a fourth grade level and they get to a 5.7, that's a huge gap. All right, going through a SWOT analysis, strengths, staff, inclusion, and transition resources. I think those all tie together. The first two, staff and inclusion, we have a huge staff, and the staff's very diverse. The staff has many strengths, which has led us to create an inclusive environment. And in that environment, we don't have a ton of core classes, and our goal is to push students out and be able to provide them support in the gen ed classes. And we're able to do that through the instructional assistance and through the co-taught courses. And then our transition resources, which is one of our goals, is to continue to develop and improve our transition resources. And we've been able to do that through the programming, through Ms. Hou, Ms. Woods' class, and through our coursework, through just the preparation for the placement test, through knowledge of the placement test through ICC, through dual credit courses, and so forth, and things that are happening in the general education that are having a positive impact in the special education for students going to college. Five years ago, and I could look at this stat, but what we're seeing is a larger student population in special education in two ways. One way is there are more students that have higher need, but then there are more students who are going into college, if that makes any sense. So more and more students are using, taking the placement test, or have the potential to take dual credit courses, and then are going to ICC or to a four-year university. Weaknesses, progress monitoring assessments. This is a weakness that happens, that's been happening for who knows how long. The high school level, when it comes to progress monitoring, is a little bit more difficult. Students are not in a classroom all day. They're not in a resource room all day. Our goal is for them not to be in a special education resource room for four years. Our goal is for them to access study hall and then use the peer tutoring labs and the math labs to prepare for the next level. With that in mind, we still need to reach their learning disabilities. So if they have a disability in reading comprehension or reading fluency or math, it's coming up with assessments in which we can benchmark those to find out where students are succeeding and where students are regressing. So some assessments that we're working on are the power reading, the freckle, and transition resource. Every student's special education must have three transition goals and three transition objectives and goals. One is independent living, one is employment, and one is education, which means then we have to assess each of those objectives. So what we did this year with the help of Ms. Sealy was create a transition gold bank with assessments. So now we can have a Google classroom. We share out that Google classroom with each class, 2019, 2020, 2021, and so forth, and then those students can get assessments to complete. Might be on organization, it might be on studying, it might be on when did you meet with your counselor and develop your schedule, whatever those goals and objectives are. The other, another weakness is remediation and college prep. We're addressing that through math lab. And students that, students that fail, that do not pass a class during the school year, it's a little harder to remediate when you're in special education due to the fact of summer school courses are not, there's not any special education summer courses due to you have one or two students in it. So that is not a fault of the district, that is just how, that's just how it is. So one way we kind of helped with that is through math lab. Electives offered in special education department. It's a weakness, but I don't necessarily know if there's anything we can do about it. We want students to be included. We want students in the general education environment, and in order to do that, you're not going to have electives in the special education department. So it's just continuously looking at what electives are offered at Washington Community High School and how that impacts the special education department. You know, how, what are some electives that students can take that kind of hit that non-college-bound experience, like transportation, and your manufacturing, and your hands-on activities? Opportunities, just like, just like WCHS population, the student population's increasing with IAPs. Currently, we have 122. Next year, we'll have 125, then 129, then 133. And what, that's great opportunity. I mean, it provides us an opportunity to, to reach some more students, to continue to develop our life skills and co-op programs, to continue to look at more courses, and to continue to look at opportunities to co-teach. But that probably does provide unfortunately more threats. So one of the threats is life skills room space and an apartment and a kitchen in the sense of our life skills, we're preparing them, we're preparing them every day to be independent, to live independently. But in order to reach them independently, it's also teaching them the skills that they need to be able to achieve success in an apartment. Make a bed, clean up after a mess, cook every day, prepare your lunch for when you go to work. Transportation, which I unfortunately did not know this, but I just found out that a Ford Transit was, was in the budget and approved. So one of the transportation threats is transportation. Every day, students are going, job coach, students are working. I mean, Suburbans are going in and out all day long, and then when you throw Impact in there with Whip and going to Threads, Hope and Love, you have the activity bus going in and out, and that doesn't even take other activities out. So that's a threat. Social work. There's 58 students currently that receive social work in special education, the legal amount's 60, and we are right on that border of, you know, social work, what do we do? More and more students come in who need social work. More and more students come in that have anxiety, and it takes up a lot of time. And it's just, it's a threat. It's a threat that continues to increase every day. State of Illinois, some things here you have, we don't have control over, and it's how, how do we deal with it? IAPs are continuously changing laws like they do academically, and the other one is care. And, you know, it just came up today. Six students got care with, in special education just today. And it's coming up with how to service those minutes so they don't receive a suspension day. So if a student gets in care, it is still the district's responsibility to service them those special education minutes, or it counts as a day of suspension. If a student receives 10 suspension days, then we have to have a manifestation meeting. We don't want a lot of manifestation meetings. So now we have to service six or seven students tomorrow, on average 150 minutes a student, which takes staff, which takes time away from the classroom. Alignment to district goals, this is a lot of stuff. I'm going to go through this. There's a lot of stuff we've already talked about. Increasing student success towards reaching IAP goals and objectives. We're doing that through power reading, we're doing that through freckle, we're doing that through the curriculums that we brought in. These are curriculums we're trying, and they're, they're, we can always change them. So it's just other ways we're trying to reach IAP goals and objectives. Student success through post-secondary opportunities. Peoria Perfect through our work-based learning construction and CNA. ICC, and then through DRS. DRS is a program in which students then transition to when they reach college to support system. So just because you leave high school doesn't mean that IAP leaves you. That doesn't mean your support leaves you. You can still have a representative from DRS, which is James Kuzlow, who then can be in contact with you to help you with that secondary employment or that secondary education. Programs and services, these are all the programs and services that are offered, and we're continuously trying to make them more effective and make them better. Managing finances efficiently, I think this is a strength of the department. We are, we are always trying to, to put less of a strain financially on the, on WCHS through using donor choose, through using Step runs, doing Panther professionals, by getting Impact sponsorships, by going to free Tasswell Mason professional development opportunities. Maximizing facility space. We try to maximize this facility space by co-teaching more, all right, so then we can get our teachers out of the classroom, they can share classrooms with others. We use the teacher's lounge currently. Every day, our life skills, our life skills transition program has pretty much taken that teacher's lounge over by using that for their Panther Perk and for their prep freeze cook. They also use the foods lab two days per week. Continue to maintain communication with home and community to be effective as a special education teacher. It's pretty much a requirement. You have to be in contact with home, you have to be in contact with parents, you have to be in contact with students. Our, our big goal that we're targeting is continuing to align transition goals. Our job, our, our goal is to continue to get students to be successful after they get out of Washington Community High School. In order to do that, we have to continue to improve, maintain our transition goals and objectives, and find ways that we can continue to get students prepared for high school or after high school. Any questions?
Has there been any tracking of those who do make it to college, how successful they are, or how long they're at college?
No. That is a good thought, though. It's something that crossed, crossed my mind of, you know.
I think it would be really interesting to see.
And when they, when they complete their transition, the final part of their transition IAP, they have to complete something to give that information, but I'm not sure how the district necessarily goes about finding like that post-secondary success, but that's something that Stevens and I can discuss and figure out, you know, what that success rate is. I mean, I have an idea what students do well and what students don't from what I hear, but I don't have that.
We get a yearly ambassador's report for them, but it doesn't break, it doesn't go whether it's an IEP or something like that. So we, we do get the ambassador's report. Thank you. Who is a person at ICC responsible for these students that may transition to them?
Mm-hmm.
One person. I remember one time I had a special ed student in my education, introduction to education class, basic class, special ed. I don't remember what district she came from. Sheeran Maney in my class, and she was through. I mean, all her thesis were essay, all tests were essay, Sheeran Maney. She and I celebrated. Because we always have to remember the potential for these students.
Yeah, I agree.
I have, oh, just a real quick question about the Impact. Is that a class? Is that considered more of like an extracurricular?
It's not a class. It's not an extracurricular.
And it's not necessarily special ed students, right?
No, it's a mix.
They're more like high.
So we just included in the special, we included in the programming of special education because, well, I guess maybe because I'm tied to it, and also because it started out, you got me. Because it started out in the special ed department centered around that behavior classroom when it was in existence, and so it's not tied just to special education students, but there are, I'd say right now, it's probably about out of 15, 16 students, and now we just added a different component to it. There's probably, it's probably a little less than half special ed. So it's in your special ed and your at-risk programming, you know, so.
But would it, like I said, so it's really, it's kind of an extracurricular type?
It's unique, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's a unique program. I'm just kind of, I've always been curious as to how it works because I feel like that's a program that could expand even, you know, continue to grow.
So what, so last Friday, what we did for the first time is, it's always been around 20 students, and so last Friday, what we did is we, we went ahead and we broke down, we printed out the grade report of every student who failed a class, one F or more, and then we printed out the report of every student who had a suspension or care, and we went through, I went through to every counselor and went through the list of what activities and clubs are they in, are they involved in any athletics, and then what students that we wanted to send letters out to. We ended up sending letters out to 38 students, and then we had a meeting on Friday, and we had 19 students attend during a sixth-hour period. And now we're receiving, now they have to turn in an application. So it was up to them to attend the meeting because Impact is really about them wanting to, them buying in, and now as, they have to turn in their application by Friday. And so now it's going to be like a two-tier program almost. You have your students who are in it, now these students are working to be in it next year. So there's an accountability aspect to it. If you don't meet the requirements this semester, current Impact students, then you're going back into that other tier. So it's something I could talk about for a long time.
No, I think it's a great program. I just never understood how it was structured, and I think that that's great because the more kids we can invite into the program.
And that's exactly what we're thinking.
I know it's just reaching the end.
Not too long ago, Mr. Fasselli brought another one of his teachers or aides, and I believe three of your students to Rotary, and he gave a presentation. And what struck me with those students was their confidence level because they spoke to the Rotarians, and they did a good job.
And Gloria, you had been happy because on Friday, we had three of those students speak to their peers. So they were, I presented, but then they were responsible for presenting what Impact meant to them, and the accountability part of that aspect, like the accountability part of it. And, you know, going into that meeting, I didn't really put my head around empowering them. I was focused on the new students coming in and reaching them, but how much it empowered those students, the current students, is what impressed me the most because they felt like leaders, which is our goal, when they left that meeting.
They can change their whole self immediately.
So, I mean, so it sounds like you've got a really dynamic program and lots of cool things. You've got, you know, traditional curriculum stuff going as much as possible, you're transitioning them into the regular classes as much as possible, sort of mainstreaming them, whatever, right? And, but you've got all these activities that they're doing, too. So I was just kind of curious because your program seems especially dynamic, like, is there like a single, and I, I think it's a lot of you, you know, I mean, I know you've got good people working for you, but like, what's the kernel of your like philosophy or something that drives you to make these changes? Because you've made a lot of changes.
For Impact or for just the department?
The whole, everything you just, the department? Because I mean, I think you're really driving things, right?
Well, I think it's just listening. I think it's, you know, I think it's, it's listening to those around you, and, you know, I think sometimes people get so self-absorbed in their thoughts that they don't hear those around them. And, you know, our staff. And, you know, our staff, especially the special education staff, has such great ideas. It's listening to their ideas, and then going back on the ideas, and how can, how can you, how can you make it into something bigger and better? And it's, it's, it's never being, with IMPACT, it's never being satisfied in knowing that it can always get better and always can improve, but not rushing it, and taking time with it. Because, you know, three years ago, two years ago, I would've said that we never would increase student population in IMPACT, because it was just a lot. But then all of a sudden, two months ago, it just was like, it's time. I don't know why. But it was time, so I don't know, I, I don't have a method behind it.
Yeah. Just comes naturally. I was in, I subbed for your class like six years ago or so.
In the behavior room?
Yeah.
That was fun.
It was great. But this one kid, I, I don't usually tell stories, but this is a great story, and I think it illustrates like what kind of classroom you made. But there's a, there's this boy in there, and he wanted to ask a girl out. And so he had brought a tie in, but he didn't know how to tie it. And this is at the end of class, like after they've done everything they were supposed to. And, and so he asked some other kid to help him, and so one of the kids pulled out their iPad and found a YouTube video of how to tie a tie. And then, and they were trying to, the one kid who's getting his tie, you know, they're, it, it ended up four kids helping each other tie this tie. And it was just really cool. I mean, it sounds like it was a mess, but it wasn't. It was like, no, we can't do this well enough, because, you know, and they, they problem-solved to get his tie tied. And, because it's not easy to tie a tie for the first time, right? And, but I just thought, that's really cool, you know, because there is no instruction from anybody. It was like just on their own, with their free time, they problem-solved for themselves. It was really cool. So, I mean, that speaks to the kind of environment a teacher creates.
Giving them ownership.
Yeah.
But then also being accountable for, for the decisions you make.
Yeah.
But then not giving up. You know, the one thing that we always say is, just, just because you make a bad decision doesn't mean you're a bad person. So how are you gonna respond, and how are you gonna learn from that?
Well, we do appreciate you giving such a detailed list, and I know you have a lot going on in your department. I've heard feedback from other department heads that they're never thrilled about talking to the school board, but we very much appreciate it, because that's the only way we have.
What do you mean? I've been looking forward to this.
You know, we might come back next month, I don't know, but, but we do value your time and energy, and thank you for coming in, because that's, gives us a window into a little bit of your department. And without that, we, we just see on paper what it is.
Welcome. Like I said, you know, having the life skills coming here, and I know Ms. Wood would gladly bring in herself and even a couple of students and do a presentation. Same thing with Mrs. Boyd, not, IMPACT could do a presentation, too. There's so much information that's out there that I think that the community doesn't know about, and with this awesome thing you're covering here, you know, it's a great way to push that out, too, and give that to the community, so. If you guys ever have any questions, if you have any questions about IMPACT or anything, let me know, and I'll do my best to give it to you.
Thank you for all your time.
Oh, you're welcome, guys. Thank you.
Just to find out where we're at, we're moving on. Oh, quarterly report from PJ Hair. Mr. Faulkman.
Try to keep this as brief and concise as possible. It's, it's a lot of what I kind of reported on last week at our building committee meeting. As far as the work that we did over Christmas break within the building, we completed all of that work in the three classrooms and a couple administrative offices, removing windows, blocking up those openings, all along the, the new firewall that separates the addition from the existing building. Removed a couple unit ventilators, installed some shaft walls to get dry air from the new fresh air intake on the roof. Got all those units reinstalled and, and everything put back for the classrooms to restart on the seventh. So we accomplished all our goals there. Over at the, the bleachers, the football field, we demoed about two-hundred feet of fence, put up temp fencing, demoed all of the existing bleacher foundations, the bleachers in their entirety and the press box, and disconnected the electrical to the existing press box. So we got everything accomplished there that we had hoped to do. Out here on the addition, things are moving along well and not well. The contractors are working every chance they can, working unproductively and, and probably not to their best financial advantage, but trying to keep their chin up and, and keep working when they can, when it's not too cold or too rainy. We've lost some days, we've adjusted the schedule, the end date on the addition from June seventh to June twenty-eighth, like we talked last week. We got a significant amount of snow, obviously, this weekend. They were out there working this morning, they'll be working tomorrow, hopefully Wednesday, but then Thursday, Friday's gonna get too cold again. And like we've discussed, we don't want to do anything that in, that it's a safety risk to the workers. Tonight, I think we're supposed to get a little bit of freezing drizzle, so we'll see in the morning. The hope is that they'll be able to work safely. But we don't want to do anything to endanger the workers, and we also don't want to do anything that risks lesser quality construction by either laying block when it's too cold or when it's too wet. The laying concrete block and building those walls is the same as pouring concrete. You're working with water and sand and cement, and below certain temperatures, it'll freeze and, and break. And all of those walls that they're building up there are structural load-bearing walls that will carry the, the weight of the building, so we have to, you know, carefully use judgment as far as when, when, when they lay walls and not. They have, they've been heating sand, heating water, covering the block, covering the walls at night, doing everything we can, shy of bringing out heaters and tenting the walls and running heat. But that's very expensive, and the gains for doing that are very minimal compared to the cost, and we're trying to be good stewards with the contingency money, and as far as when, when we, when we spend money to keep building and when we don't. As far as, we talked about the, the contingency and the allowances, we've spent, that improved since last month. We, we had a large credit on one particular work item, where finalizing the music storage system. And so with that credit, contingency money spent as of last month, I think was somewhere around seventy-five thousand, that has gone down to sixty-six thousand with a, with a credit that we got. And meaning, and then so the remaining contingency monies are about a hundred and eighty-three thousand, I believe. And then, plus, yeah, a hundred and eighty-three plus additional forty-five thousand allowances, so we still have about two-hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand dollars in contingency allowances, which is very, very good. We also received bids for the flooring bid package last month, and that's in your board packet for approval to move forward with the low responsible bid from Central Illinois Commercial Flooring. That saved money. Their bid came in about six thousand dollars less than the placeholder we had for it, so that was good news. What else? And then as far as, I'm also developing the expanded schedule for the bleacher work, so that we can start plugging in when work's gonna start in the spring and continue through the summer, so that we can have the bleachers and the press box, all that work completed by the end of July, August first. And so I'll be getting that to Dr. Freeman and Dr. Sander for review. And then there are also, Barnesworth Group is working on a drawing that you guys all saw last week for, for gaining pricing for a little bit extra concrete and fencing on the backside of the bleachers to allow for passage of people behind the bleachers instead of all of it being concentrated in front. So we'll have some more information on that in the near future. And then also working with the school district on sound system and infrastructure for future sound system and electrical capacity at the new press box for lighting underneath the bleachers and power at the front of the bleachers for sound systems and amps that go with sporting events and concerts and marching band and all that, all that type of thing. That's about it. I know we talked last week, was there any other additional questions, or?
I think, I mean, I understand why it's going slower, I mean, it's just mother nature's gonna do that. And, so I appreciate the consistent work, and, you know, you're from Washington, and Summit is from Washington, so it's obviously a lot of Washington people trying to get it done for us.
Yes.
And it's their tax dollars, too.
Yeah.
So I appreciate that. And, but what I, I like it that you have been working with the administration, using the downtime of vacation and stuff to start cuing things up, getting that inside work done. And I mean, that'll pay out down the road, and we can just move through things much quicker. So I appreciate all the kind of advanced work that you're doing and working well with the administration on that.
Sure, no problem.
Thanks for all your hard work that you've been doing on that. And I know that construction is never fun in Illinois, but it does happen, and you guys have been doing a really nice job. I wonder what's going on, and then also working with Barnesworth with their new prints and such, but just keep plugging away, that's all you can do.
Yeah, that's all we can do. I know when I dropped my send-off this morning on Bondurant, I was really happy to see Summit there working, and I was also really happy that I'm not one of them.
They're probably not prepared for it, so they're, they're kind of used to doing that. They gotta make money in the winter also, so.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, thanks, Brian.
All right, thank you.
Moving on to Dean's report, that was in your board book. Is there any questions? Moving on to the financial reports, Dr. Phil Sander.
Okay, so I'm gonna take you out to the webpage, the financial dashboard, and the monthly, I'm gonna bring it up this way. And so this is our investment report. There we go, make it a little bit bigger. This number has dropped, because last month we paid almost five-hundred thousand dollars in, in some of the projects. And so how this is working is, after the bills are approved tonight, I contact PMA, and they basically wire, transfer the money for the bills to our account, and that's how that is taking place. So we'll start seeing this number here, the three million start decreasing a little bit over the next few months. Here's our insurance update. You can see where we came in with our expenses in November. It gives you a, a nice graphic of, well, we're right there, close to the break-even point. If you take a look over here on the left-hand side, this is a side-by-side comparison, last year to this year. You can see our medical costs were significantly higher last year, and because of that, we had received more reimbursement. Our reimbursement is down this year, but I will say that we will, we have started to get some reimbursement on some of our larger claims. And so, you know, the, the Health Trust is still looking really sound, we're right at about a million dollars in total fund balance. We have not had an insurance committee meeting. I, I don't like to be cruel and, and have an insurance committee meeting on the first Wednesday after we get back from break, so our actual meeting is set up for this Wednesday. That's the, the finance report. You have any questions?
Thank you. Moving on to five-point-five, board committee reports, and we only had facilities meet over the holiday, well, we didn't meet over the holidays, but we met since our last board meeting.
Last week.
Last week.
Yep.
Actually, it was Thursday. Yeah. And so, we took, Mr. Faulkman told us a lot about that. One other thing we talked about was putting a possible additive into concrete for getting moisture out. That's something we talked about. We talked about the flooring bids, how they came in, there were four bidders on that. And then we talked about the timeline, how things had shifted a little bit with the timeline for work, and until more days come, when the weather comes, we're not gonna know exactly the outcome of how that is, but I'm confident they're gonna keep it so that we can open on time, because that's what they said. So, I'm gonna keep them to that. Was there anything else on facilities that I missed?
Oh, we had to choose door colors, too.
Yeah.
Yes, we were with caramel door colors. They're a nice birch color, actually wooded, laminate type, so that's exciting.
Look away from them.
Yes. Honey did not get the capote, so we are getting caramel doors. That was about the extent of it, and just basically looking at the prints in detail and a little, few updates to the seating, I mean, not the actual seating itself, but the, just the walkways behind it.
Any other questions on facilities? Moving on to six-point-one, teacher openings for 2019-2020.
Sure, and there are two slides on this. Whatever reason, I think we're having a little trouble opening it, but I was able to send it to Dr. Sanders. So let's see on the first slide, the original proposal I brought to you last year with a staffing, three-year staffing plan, and you can see what the plan was for FY20, going into FY20. It was a Spanish teacher, a science teacher, counselor, two special ed teachers, and family consumer science teacher replacing, replacements, okay? So things have changed a little bit due to enrollment, we did some readjusting, and I brought that to you, I believe, in November, and, no, maybe that happened in October. But having said that, where we are going now are the two new positions we are looking at, instead of three. Instead of doing Spanish, science, and counselor, we're looking at science and counselor for next year. And then replacement hires, we have two special ed teachers retiring, family consumer science teacher retiring, and an English teacher retiring, and we need to replace all of those positions. So in the next week or so, we're going to post for those positions, and basically I wanted to give you an opportunity to see that before we posted. Any action that you do on it would be to hire new positions themselves, so. That was all previous conversation pieces and all under this.
Remind you?
Yep. So.
So I can't see, it won't pull up here, so we're, we're adding two instead of three new faculty.
Correct.
Doing in the fall, and then the rest of them just replacements.
Replacements.
And the Spanish, how can the change in not hiring in this?
Well, we had a little bit lower increase in enrollment than we thought we would have. I think we're down forty kids from what we projected, because we started the year about thirteen-eighty instead of fourteen-twenty, almost fourteen-thirty. And so that had a play in it, and just what the kids went into, we believe we'll be okay without the Spanish teacher for next year. We did, we did bump Spanish teacher to a higher next year, that'll be a new position that we bring to you next year. So it was actually moved over to FY21 from FY20. So you can see it kind of down at the bottom over there. And we are talking about a new math teacher, but we're gonna evaluate as to whether or not we need it. Kind of depends on enrollment. I mean, we tried to give you something you could see last year, that gave you about a three-year projection, but we also want to be reasonable, and if things change within enrollment, we want to make sure that we're not just hiring because we put it into a plan, but we're evaluating it as well.
Is it evaluate, it says evaluate in FY21 for 22, do you mean we're gonna evaluate in FY20?
We're gonna evaluate math in FY20, so once we get the enrollment numbers next year and look at what our needs are going to be, we'll determine whether or not we need that math teacher. And the English teacher, we think that will go and get moved to FY21, evaluate for 22.
Okay, so it's gonna even move out of that column?
Yes. So that was, that was the purpose for that, to show you that we were kind of flexing things out.
Sounds good.
That English teacher, I know most teachers with master's degrees get them in education, many do. That's the one for ICC, or is this a straight, a master's English, or do we need a master's?
That was, we're, we're okay, because we have a couple of masters.
Yeah, straight one. That used to be a hard position to fill.
Yes.
And then, so you guys will be, we'll be hiring these kind of coming up pretty quick? I mean, there's an optimum hiring window, right?
Hopefully, hopefully we have all the professional staff done by February, March, I believe, and then after that, it's just the surprise things that come up.
You've all seen the fall already, and so?
Yes.
Any other questions about hiring this line?
It's nice to be updated, so we can plan ahead, especially with teacher shortage.
Yeah.
Okay. Moving on to six-point-two, is the PE waivers for sophomore athletes. I think that was a document that just needed to be updated, is that correct?
It is that. And here's what happened, if you remember letting... If you remember, last year we updated the document to include sophomore athletes because we had included band students that could take PE waivers. So we added the sophomore athletes in last year, except somehow in the draft, we left some language in there that meant that the athletes could not take a study hall, however, the band students could. So we needed to readjust this to make it equal playing field for both. Basically, all we're doing is making it possible for the sophomore athletes to take a study hall. That's the change. So you can see the line-dot version and then we added students who dropped or are removed from the qualifying activity will be placed in PE as soon as possible. We can't do it immediately. But by taking out 10th grade students to qualify and may waive PE, providing they follow requirements, and that cannot be waived if the student is enrolled in a study hall, we struck that language to make it possible for that.
And that started this year, right?
That will be.
Or is that going next year?
The, the study hall change would be.
Nobody means sophomores could waive.
Yes.
But very few did because the athletes need the study halls. All of their activity is after school. So that's why we had so few who took advantage of it.
So, and part of the reason we did the whole sophomore waiver was to help alleviate numbers in PE, P+.
So is that something that we need to vote on next month, or is that?
Yes.
Okay, so it's just informational?
Information.
Moving on to 6.3 and review the board goals in February.
Just reminded that we're gonna review the board goals in February.
Well, thank you. We'll look forward to that in February. 6.4 is the reminder of the board goals meeting.
On January 28 at 5:00 PM. And you'll have 10 or 14.
And we're all invited to that.
You are all invited, since it's an actual board meeting.
Right. Now, we look forward to that. We will look at what we have, we'll piece something together. One thing we might wanna talk about is, well, we can do that at that meeting, but we'll probably need a second meeting to solid, to make it solid. Well, let's start with this one. Okay, and then 6.5, the school calendar.
Okay, so I put the draft document in there. Now, there were some changes in school code that changed the way that we were supposed to do the school calendar. Therefore, the usual tool that I would use and have shown you for the last five years, I could not use this year because they have not opened it for us to actually access. Things are changing rapidly as we speak. There have been, the legislation originally said that it would be up to the Board of Education to determine what an instructional day is. And that opened the door for the potential for, not distance learning, but online learning for students. So, in other words, if we saw a snow day coming, let's say that what we received Saturday was actually forecasted for the middle of the, for Wednesday. We could've told the students on Tuesday, hey, if that snow hits and we have to call off school on Wednesday morning, we want you to go online to Google Classroom. There will be assignments for you for you to work. We could've counted it as an attendance day by the current legislation. The problem that we are now seeing is now there's new legislation putting it back to there has to be five hours of in-person instruction to occur. So, as with all things Illinois, we're not real sure what to do with the calendar. But we need to do something because we've got a school year coming up and we need to at least know when to start this. So what you have in front of you is my best shot at a draft calendar based on that. I have started to work with the union on this and we'll have to work a little bit further into it. And I'll give you the real quick down and dirty version of this school calendar. So we're looking at Institute Day on August 12th, first day of school, the 13th. By the way, anything you see red is non-attendance days or holidays. So you can see there are two, there's one in September, one in October. You can see where Thanksgiving falls in November, all the yellow are late start days. Then we get to December, very similar to this year. We're looking at a two-week Christmas break, which would, the last day of exams would be the 19th and the Teachers Institute on the 20th. Then you get a weekend, five days, another weekend, five more days, another weekend, and then we start school. Okay? Now, in November, if you look at the dark gray box for November 1st, Schedule Parent-Teacher Conference Day. And the way, the way that we've done it in the past is an evening parent-teacher conference on Thursday, so they go from 4:00 to 8:00. And then the next day, they'll come from 8:00 to noon. So they're, they're eight hours, okay? However, the reason you see a 17 and 18 at the bottom, and what I was doing was totaling days, attendance days, so that I could get a feel for where we're at, try to split those semesters evenly. Remember, we want that first semester to end at Christmas break so that the kids have taken exams before they leave and we don't lose two weeks of instruction when we return, spending a week on reviewing and another week on exams. So, the two numbers at the bottom. If we can do the online learning day, we will actually test fire that on that parent-teacher conference, that have a planned online learning day. That's what we'd like to do. And that would give us 18 attendance days in November instead of 17. Would raise the number of total attendance days in first semester to 7. That's a very even split on the semester, we're pretty proud of that. But it would also be a good opportunity for us to see how that system works. So if we're allowed to do that, I think that's what we're really gonna push for because I think in the, in the long run, this will be a good thing for the school, for the kids. So, once you get past that, then you see where spring break falls in March, that's the week. And then Easter is the 10th, or the 12th, so Good Friday's the 10th and Monday's the 13th. A lot of people travel on that weekend, so we've traditionally given them that Monday. The five, the last day of school with students would be May 21st with the Institute on the 22nd. Now, that puts us pretty close to, what day?
Memorial Day.
Now, let's get the two backwards. So, so we really only have room for about one emergency day there and then we're pushing on beyond Memorial Day. The five, you can see the five emergency days in here. And if we don't beat them, that gives us the 176 days we need with Institutes on the 22nd, the 20th, the 11th, and the 12th.
So just a quick question on that. First, during the Institute Day, so the Institute Day would just be a normal 8 to 3 day?
For teachers. Usually it's 8 to 1 and then they go lunch at 1 for the rest of the day.
Okay. No, and then, so you're gonna try to have kids log in that day or something, as you say?
That was for Parent-Teacher Conference Day on November 1st.
Okay, gotcha.
Teachers Institute Day really is designed for teacher professional development.
Oh, okay, I'm getting those mixed up. Okay, gotcha, alright.
So, is October 11th gonna be, is that homecoming weekend?
Um, no, I pushed that over, heard we said we can't have homecoming on that weekend. Can't be. Because that's kinda Institute week.
Right.
So, we'll probably have to move that homecoming day. Which, I know that we have a three-year schedule for homecoming, but that's a lot more flexible than this schedule. So, one of the two can move, homecoming can move.
And that'll be an early update, but that doesn't have to show up on the calendar?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Well, thanks for putting that together. I'm sure you're still trying to move it a little bit.
It's, it's a little bit, yeah.
So, when do we even finalize this, I mean, ideal?
Oh, usually in February.
Right, that's what I'm, so, so we're still gonna aim for that and see what happens?
Well, now we're kinda stuck at limbo depending on this legislation because they could change all the rules on how it is and.
But the big, the big issue is the one day that we have as an online learning day.
Yes. But there's a bigger problem with what they're doing. If they don't allow for online learning, the emergency day issue becomes very, very significant because you are required to do 176 days of attendance. If you can't do online learning and you go past five emergency days, I don't know what that means. In other words, you would never be able to schedule the end of the school because it could go out forever. And that's, that's a problem. So there, they need to fix some things at the state level so that we can finalize. But I think we've got a good pattern here that we should be able, at least we have a good, something we can go off with. Okay, I think we're pretty satisfied with this.
And the online learning, do we have an obligation to? I mean, what if a kid doesn't have access to internet or that kinda stuff? What is our obligation?
Well, and that was a discussion point with everybody. Whatever we give as assignments, there needs to be enough time when we get back to school for kids who don't have access to be able to complete.
And we don't have as a district, because that's a required day that we're required to do online, we don't have any obligation to make sure they have access to internet?
No. But we would definitely need to help them out.
Right, oh, maybe I'm not saying we shouldn't have one.
Because I do think the vast majority of kids, that might be a problem. I, I mean, vast majority. You're talking very smart this time, you're a person.
But we don't need to go online with the department, you know, right?
Well, it would be you work with us and wait for the legislation and then you can present it again coming next month.
Yeah, well, what we may end up doing is trying to approve a calendar so that we can proceed. And if we have to amend it, that might be, just so you know. If that happens, that's because, once again, we're being asked to do something that we've been told not to do, so.
And with the union, you're working with them on, that's awesome.
Yes. Yes.
Thanks for that update.
No.
Moving on to 6.6, is there any other that anyone wanted to bring up that didn't make the agenda?
Okay, other than I went to a lacrosse meeting right before I came here and it looks like we have a lot of boys at least, almost, almost double what we expected, right?
Uh, very close.
Maybe it'll be a pretty popular program.
It's looking good so far, yeah.
Okay, moving on to the consent agenda. The consent, let me get my board book up here. The consent agenda for January 2019 is 7.1, the minutes to approve the facility committee meeting minutes of December 5th, 2018. 7.12, approve WCHS curriculum committee meeting minutes of December 6th, 2018. 7.13, approve the regular board meeting minutes of December 10th, 2018. 7.14, approve the facilities committee meeting minutes of January 10th, 2019. And then the bill, 7.2. And that is everything on the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So move.
Motion in the second?
I'll second, please.
I think you're worth it.
Okay, gotcha. There you go.
Okay, any further discussions on any of those meeting minutes for the bills? Roll call, please.
Hesse?
Yes.
Knopf-Singer?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
McHatt?
Yes.
Motion carries. Moving on to action items, 8.1 personnel, certified employment, 8.11. That would be for recommendation, approve the employment of Laura Cristello-St. John as a long-term substitute Spanish teacher for the members' leave of absence as deemed listed as a recommendation for improved employment. Is there a motion to approve as presented?
Move.
Second.
Motion in second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Warren?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Hesse?
Yes.
Knopf-Singer?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Motion carries. Moving on to 8.12, non-certified employment, a recommendation to approve the employment of Will Doughty as the crossing guard for the 2018-2019 school year at a rate as recommended per employment.
Real quick on that one. We had a senior, if you remember, co-op student that did the crossing guard over there. He was an intern with. So Will has graciously come in with interest to do crossing guard duties now. So he is also a co-op student, same thing. It's basically 11 bucks a day to make sure the kids get across street pretty safely, so.
Is it the crossing guard on Will Moore?
Yes. Over by, over by five.
That's a great solution, though. Because I think it was hard to find somebody to do that.
Hard? Only partially defines what we were going to. That position had been open for you and we had zero access.
It's a neat idea.
Well, you'll make many people on Facebook very angry. You would make concern about that absence.
Yes.
It is, it makes a huge difference having ours. It's apparent when you pick your kid up, even just traffic-wise, it's, it's very helpful. Plus, he can greet everybody every day, so he's gonna be very popular, so.
So as soon as this is approved, I'll get Mr. Doughty into my office for studying in the morning and say, hey, guess what? Here's your, here's your best, please stop saying, see you tomorrow morning.
Is there a motion to approve as presented?
So move.
Second. Motion second. Roll call, please. Fisher?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Hesse?
Yes.
Knopf-Singer?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you. Moving on to 8.13, extracurricular employment. And we have a couple here. Yeah, the first one is the employment of Travis Ingstrom as assistant track coach for the 2018-19 school year at the rate presented and recommended for employment. Is there a motion to approve as presented?
Move.
Second. Motion second. Any discussion? He is an English teacher, is he a third?
Uh, physics.
Oh.
Yes.
Science.
He is a teacher, though.
Science, okay, that's right, okay. Roll call, please.
McNabb?
Yes.
Hesse?
Yes.
Knopf-Singer?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Ward?
Motion carries. Moving on to the next one is approved employment of Haley Renaud as the assistant girls' lacrosse coach for the 2018-19 school year at the rate presented and recommended for employment. Is there a motion to approve as recommended?
So move. Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? She's our coach for basketball and volleyball.
She's a sport athlete.
She was a tremendous athlete, you're a proud graduate of WC.
Nice. I didn't hear you at college.
Forget that one.
Okay, roll call, please. Butler?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
McHatt?
Yes.
Hesse?
Yes.
Knopf-Singer?
Yes.
Motion carries. Onto 8.2. And this is the board that approved the superintendent to let bids out for the underground storage tank removal and replacement with the above-ground storage tanks. Is there a motion to approve as recommended?
Second.
Motion second. Dr. Sanders would probably be happy that this is finally coming to the end of this.
How many years?
They're on the radar, scary, you know, we love them.
Okay, roll call, please.
Hesse?
Yes.
Knopf-Singer?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Motion carries. Moving on to 8.3. That is for the, approve the lowest qualified bid for the flooring of 2018-19 projects. Opening bid on the flooring portion of the building project was held on December 19 and was presented to the facilities committee highlighted in the TAD bid sheet. Central Illinois Commercial Flooring was the lowest qualified bidder and the flooring work will occur in the new music room addition, renovated classrooms, and press box. The amount of bid from Central Illinois Commercial Flooring is as follows, $49,702 and for the building work and zero for the bleacher work, pulling $49,702 for the entire package. As a recommended for the qualified bid project, flooring project. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Knopf-Singer?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Hesseck?
Yes.
Motion carries. 8.4, approve the Superintendent to Transfer Three CDs at the Heartland Bank Board to a FDIC Insured Cash Account. Is there a motion to approve as presented?
So, move.
Second. Motion second. Any discussion?
I think, I just want to commend Dr. Sanders for watching these things, you know, carefully evaluating them and making the most of our investments, because that's money working for us. So, thank you.
And I'll say this, the folks at Heartland Bank were really good. They got with me. They have taken on a new component, and it's the wealth management component, and that's why this is something fairly new that they're doing. And it's the easiest way to get a higher return on those CDs. And so, basically, we could make about four times what a current return has been, I'm sorry, about eight times what a current return is on those three CDs. And it gives us time to bid out, you know, to see if there's something even better for that investment.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry, how, there's CDs that usually have a sort of life?
They do, and these CDs were established long before I ever got here. I think one was 2008, two were in 2008, and I think one was established in 2002. And I can't comment on, you know, the Board's decision to purchase those at that time, but this is a great opportunity to shift, and they're, you know, they're fully liquid. We can cash them out anytime without penalty or roll them into something else.
It's a good, safe place. Good job.
Roll call, please.
Warren?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Hesseck?
Yes.
Knopf singer?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.